Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, will you do the pledge?
Sure.
................................................ Okay, um, roll call. Dawn?
Here.
Lindsey?
Present.
Frank? It's not here. Donna? I'm here. Chris Irwin? Is not here. Freddie?
Here.
And Jacqueline Berry?
Here.
Um... Has everyone read the minutes of the meeting? Ma'am? Um... Um... Take a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve by Lindsey Barrier.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Um... We want to elect Chair and Secretary.
I would like to nominate Don Morcy to be Chair.
Is there anyone else that would like to do it? Okay, I'll... I'll accept that.
Great.
Then I guess I will second on your behalf.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Not opposed.
All right. Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, Rose. Just a little bit more business. Um, Secretary? I'd like to nominate Lindsey Barrier.
I'd like to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, special reports from other city departments or committees?
We have none at this, this time.
What would those entail?
Now, Chris said that, Chris is a, um, what is your exact title, Chris? City codes or?
Planning Director.
Planning Director, Planning, okay. And is there, Philip, would you have anything to?
I do, and I don't have a lot of information, so, um, South Central has hired a new person that helps with the, uh, and you may know more, Donna, about this, uh, but helps with the historical zoning and guidelines. Um, if you guys want to have them updated, uh, we can do that, and they would help, and there's a grant that thing, and I don't know a lot about it yet, but they can come and help assist with that if we feel like they need to be updated.
And that was when we, when we all got together, we first got together, and we did the design guidelines for the city. If you remember, I put the design guidelines together and just because to become a certified local government and get and be able to get that grant for our design guidelines for a city, we had to have them. It's kind of backwards, but, so they do have a grant that we can apply for, for that, uh, to do the design guidelines for our downtown area. So, um, she said she'd be willing to come and talk to us.
Um, her name is Amanda Smith, and she is the, um, Stewart District. And she did talk about an email about there, since we are now certified, uh, that there's a grant available for that if you guys choose to do so. But I think there'll be more information to come on that.
Would she be the same as the certified local government grant?
She would have all the information. She would have all the information. She's working out of South Central. Also, um, we are required to have training once a year, and we haven't had it for probably four years. So she, I think Amanda would be the person that could do that training, and she might give us training on some of our design guidelines and that type of stuff too, so we could, we may be able to incorporate all of that.
There was one online that I did in December.
You what?
You did the one in December that was online?
I didn't hear about that. The last one I went to was at the Episcopal Church in Columbia when we first.
Yeah, Chris gave us that information, and I'll send it online. It's the, uh, the one on, uh, January the 30th.
Yeah.
It was online.
Is that just class or training, like?
I missed it.
It was just, it was just a little seminar that you had several guest speakers, uh, to.
Okay.
It was just something I had emailed. I had received and emailed it out to the, to the.
Somehow I missed it, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
Um, I have.
I think that'd be great if she could bring us from a different country, yeah.
I will make sure this happens.
Okay.
I can, uh, I had sent one out a while ago as well that was just kind of seminar stuff that somebody had sent me. I don't know if that counts as training, but I'll try to do that too.
Okay, um, so, um, new business?
New business. A certificate of appropriateness for 105 Broadway to restore and replace front windows, front door, rear doors, and replace front awnings, repair exterior walls, paint exterior, replace rear concrete pad, and build a perglaub 19 by 6 feet over the concrete pad.
So, um, Rose Duley is here. This is her building that we're talking about, and this is part of our downtown improvement grant. Um, is, does everyone know which building we're talking about?
I think so.
It's the, um, pardon?
I said, it's just one down there, right.
Right, and, um, this building has historic significance for our black community, and, uh, Rose did some, I know that you did some, um, investigation on what it was. Do you want to tell them what this building used to be?
Um... My name is Rose Lynn Duley. I live at 1503 Tozen Drive in Columbia. I own the nail salon, uh, Naughty Nail Care on Bluegrass, 104 Bluegrass Avenue. Um, that building belonged, I purchased the building from Price Whittaker, and it used to be just a, uh, little cafe, like a little cafe club. So, um, so I purchased the building from him, and, um, I've heard a lot of different things about the building in the community years ago, you know, from years ago, um, but that's, he's the only person that I actually know that owned the building before me, so.
But was it a restaurant before? Or cafe?
It could have been like a cafe-type restaurant, mhm.
I know that, um, in, they've done some videos in front of it, um, the Keith Urban video, um, John 316 has, highlights that building, and that building's in that. So it's something that when, when Rose, um, submitted her application to the, uh, DIG Committee, and Dawn, I think you're on that committee, were you on that committee?
Yeah, but I didn't know that.
Okay.
She submitted that.
Um... We had a meeting. Anyway, um, and we thought it was important for, for that committee to, I mean, that building to, um, receive some of the funds. This was in the second round of the, the grant funds that we had left over from some of the other funds. So, um, that was, um, that was one of the buildings that we gave to. So what, um, so what Rose has done is, um, it, uh, submitted a, a bid. The city put, um, it up for bid, and the bid has been received. Um, it was approved by the commission, the city commission, and so they're getting ready to get started on the building.
Uh, so the city, so the city issued an RFP with this property?
Yes, sir.
Uh, could somebody explain?
So we're just here to ratify what's already been approved?
So somebody explain.
Yes, sir. So, um, and Donna's definitely going to need to, but the, the downtown facade grant, and it runs through the city, uh, but we have to follow our purchasing policies. So anything over, um, 25, what was this bid? I can't remember.
It was over 25.
We had to do a sealed bid, so we did the sealed bid, and then come in, um, and the city commission elected to approve that. Now, it's in front of you guys, if you want to carry it to the next step.
And so that's the way it goes. The city commission has to approve it, then it comes to be for us to approve it, and then they can get started on it.
This is going to be funded through that grant. Apparently I didn't get invited to the second meeting, but.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That was probably my fault.
That's okay. So, uh, so it says, 25, 75 grand.
The amount, I don't have the amount. What was the amount of the bid?
The amount of the bid was 33,000 or something like that.
So I think we, what was your award?
Uh, well, you know, the award was 33, plus the eight, I think, that I have to contribute.
Anyway, so, um, you have pictures of the building in here.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and, uh, there's, so, um, it would entail new doors and windows, which, all of this stuff that, that is on here fits in with the grant. Uh, new doors, windows, and two windows in the back, and a door in the back. Um, have you decided about, you know, you've already put a new roof on it?
Yes, I already have a new roof.
Uh, a new awning?
Uh, yes, we talked about an awning.
That's already been included, done? Okay, nothing's been done yet?
No, nothing's been done toward the, the grant.
Okay, I saw that here, I just thought it was finished.
There was two bids that come in, uh, ACS Building was 37,950, um, Vision Construction was 33,485, and, um, Vision Construction was awarded from.
Right, 33.
From the elected.
Okay.
Has there been anything awarded through, has anybody applied for the property conservation grant for this property?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Jump on that, Dawn.
Yeah, if, um...
I didn't know, I just, apparently I, I don't know, I have some misinformation on that.
A conservation grant?
Well, yeah, it's, I don't know if it, this property, it's, uh, it's through this organization, Republican Party Partners out of Franklin, and it's basically to secure the building, I think, during the process. I didn't know if anything had been, had been applied.
The city, that's usually for municipalities and their buildings, uh, for us, and we, we either buy, we get awarded every year for it for our government buildings.
But nothing for this particular bill?
Not that I'm worried, yes.
So, um, the DIG grant is, um, will, it, um, ends on December 15th, and your contractor can get all of this done by then. Anyone have any questions or?
Do you have to come back in front of us to, to show what kind of awnings, or do we, are we granting, you know, authority to approve awnings?
We've already given our, um...
I knew we did that for Robert, but I wasn't sure.
It's, it just goes with the, it doesn't go for the person, it goes with the position. So, um, Chris has the authority to approve any awnings that you have, that you've put on there. Um, and so everything else, I think, is in here, is in the application.
Yeah. I took the numbers from the windows, the door, went online and found that particular, uh, oh, dark door that you were installing, put the pictures in, just so that it was something they could visually see.
Okay, thank you.
I'm guessing it's just kind of a glass door.
Like a commercial door.
Yes, yes.
Do you know yet what you, um, are going to do with this building?
Yes, um, I plan to use it as a revolving door for just a rental. I don't want just one person renting the building, but I would prefer to use it as a rental for, like, birthday parties.
Um, so a venue?
Yeah, like a venue.
Okay.
Pop up, um, you know, somebody don't want to, uh, own a brick and mortar for, you know, be nice to have something for people to have a breakfast for the court, you know, court days, things like that. So just, just a.
Oh, that's interesting. Can't bud off the, that's a pretty cool idea. We don't have a lot of those in our closet. In fact, I don't, the only thing I can think of is upstairs at the grill.
Yeah, and Danny's building, Danny's.
Okay.
But something, um, that the community, that's not so expensive that people can rent without spending, you know, a thousand dollars to rent a building for a birthday party or a baby shower, you know, it's not a big.
The community certainly don't need something that large for, that's a good idea, Rose. I like that idea.
Thank you.
Okay, um, color?
Color, um, just an off-white, um, just something very neutral.
Anyone have any questions for Rose?
Thank you for, for having this building.
Oh, this is worship.
It could be a nice improvement.
I'm looking forward to it. I've had, had lots of questions about it, so looking forward to getting started.
Okay, can, um, um, anyone want to make a, um...
Motion to proceed and approve?
Yeah.
I'll do it.
I'm, of course. Thank you for that.
Lindsey?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rose, you can tell, is it David?
Yes, David.
Tell David he can get started.
All right.
The best and the better.
I know, I know, we can get past this rain right now.
And if you have any questions or anything, and I'll be taking pictures and monitoring until Chris. So if you have any questions, because you just gave me a call.
Okay.
And, uh, he did it looking pretty.
All right, thank you, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Rose.
Thank you, Rose.
And we have on your agenda a B and item for discussion, awnings. This was something that was brought to me after I had sent the packets out, but, um, would, I think Philip may have a little more information on it.
Um, I think that we've already discussed this, these with this group. Um, it's been a while.
Yeah, you were right, we had designated that authority to you. Well, that's you to Robert.
Yeah.
Or Rodney.
To that position, I think.
To that position, exactly.
But I think at one of our meetings that Katrina was here, and I remember Katrina and Mike both being here.
And we also discussed the, um, barber's, what, what the haircut place, the barber shop.
Lightning.
Lightning.
So it's been a while, so we might not remember, but basically, um, these are, and these are all awnings. But there is some painting in, I don't have.
They have this in the back. So, um, I'll be the first to say this has been a kind of a hard one to really navigate and figure out where we're at on it. Um, but we are trying to meet, um, a timeline by the end of the year to close these grants out. Uh, for the majority, however you want to proceed with it, they are awnings. The only one I know that may have changed was the grill, and it is, let me find it here.
That's 100 South Main, it's on Main Avenue.
Yeah. Mount Pleasant Grill. So what they have on the quote that they're going to do, uh, is recover canvas awning for grill area, black vinyl fiber, no balance, no graphics, um, and that's what they're doing there.
So just solid black?
Yeah, so, and the rest of them are awnings, uh, the 107, 109 awning, and I'll read you what is on the quote. I don't have any pictures, uh, but if they come, I guess y'all discussed that at one of the meetings?
They did come and talk to us about the meeting, because I remember, um, they were going to paint over on, um, we approved them painting, um, there under the stairway on Bluegrass, right there. And because my concern was that we did not paint over that, um, historic drug sign.
Yeah.
And they agreed not to do that.
I did, I'll, I'll through, walk around with Katrina trying to get this, um, really going, and she did mention that, and she's gonna, they're not going to paint over it, they're gonna bring it back to life.
Okay.
Uh, so, um, yeah, the same wording, same everything, but bring it back out. And that is, would that be 108?
I think so.
Yeah.
That's right on the market.
Okay, so that was part of it, and I think we approved that before, I'm pretty sure we did.
Okay.
Um, I don't, does anyone have any problem? Do we want to approve it again, or?
I think we're okay to proceed.
And then maybe my fault for having this, if we did do that on the agenda, just trying to make sure that we carried this timeline so we close the grant.
Well, it's been, it's been a long time, Philip.
Okay.
And, I mean, I can remember a long time ago, I can't remember yesterday, but a long time ago, I can remember. And the more I started thinking about it, I know that we had discussed it. I think that we had at some point approved it. Um, but am I the only one that remembers that?
I went through some of the minutes from a couple of years back.
Mhm, and you didn't find it?
I do recall, uh, in the minutes, something about awnings being approved. I go back and research that and see if there was an address with it, but I do recall there was some awnings.
There, I don't, I, I don't think, that might have been one of your other mini boards that you were on, Donna, but I, I'll, I'll motion to approve them bringing out the drug sign, as long as they're maintaining the integrity of.
Corey, do you have anything to add? Uh, because I know we've looked at it quite a bit today on that.
Um... I couldn't find where y'all had designated that Chris could make decisions on awnings. Um, but I think that in order to make this timeline a path forward would be that y'all could give him the approval or that position, and they approve to.
Okay. Why don't I make a motion?
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we designate that authority to Chris's position, your Director of Codes.
The Director of Codes.
Building, planning.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Those are the kind of decisions we would like to designate to you. I'll make that motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Chris, so you can, um, approve the, the awnings for these and also for Rose's. When, um, and I'll make sure that, or Philip can make sure that when they get the awnings and submit it, you know, that, oh, they're going to have to pull permits for the awnings anyway, right? Okay, so then it goes through your office and you're good.
So how would you like for us to follow up with that, with some, once we get some rendering, some pictures to you guys? Or do we need to schedule another meeting?
No, I think Chris can, okay.
Okay.
So I could put it in the back.
They have to come back before you the following meeting, if it's a minor decision. Um... I don't know why it says that, but that's what your current bylaw says.
That we.
He would have to, he would have to bring it back to you in October.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it can be done via email if we're all included for the minor decisions, correct?
Mm-mm.
No, not, no emails on public meetings.
Okay.
But I think that you could, anything Chris approves has to be based off of the historic guidelines, right? So as long as he's approving it pursuant to those guidelines, there's really no risk of y'all overturning something. It would only be if he's very extremely far off of the designer view of guidelines, that you would have to need to overrule anything that he'd already done, but.
So.
Your bylaw would come back before you in October for ratification.
So Chris can go ahead and approve them, and then bring them back to us for, um, the final, uh, ratification in October?
Yeah.
Okay, that'll get them started, they'll get started building. And you talked to the construction company about them being able to install them?
So two thoughts there, um, I called about what Corey said, as long as it's not way outside of scope, because we're taking a private business and they're probably putting the order in to purchase these, so it had to be really, would y'all, everybody agree, it'd be really bad not to, not to approve that in October?
Yes.
I would think, and then, yes, I did work with Adams Construction. Uh, Katrina gave a date of November 15th, all of them being installed. That may be challenging in itself, however, I'm going to work with them to make sure, what does it take? As long as they're not, I'm talking to Larry, the construction manager, as long as they're not pouring concrete, it's probably, we can make that happen, but just to try to meet this timeline. So there's a lot of money there, this grant, that we, that the businesses and the business owners, we don't want to go back.
Right.
So, um, yeah.
And you included Kathy McDaniel, you know, that one too?
Yes.
Okay, because she does have an awning, and I'll get in touch with her.
I don't know when she, when they're coming for hers, though, so we, I could follow up if you can help me with that, whenever they come, and so I can coordinate that.
What's the date for, um, MCI?
November 15th is what, um, MCI said that they would be here, which could be challenging for all of those at one time trying to coordinate that, so, um, but we know more, and really didn't know till after the awnings how the direction went along that, so I'll coordinate even more to make sure.
So I would just suggest that they're neutral colors, no pinks, no purples, and if you see something that you have a question on, that you can email us and see if, before you approve it for them, if there's, will that work, Corey? If, if he sees something.
Talk to you one-on-one instead of, no voting. Uh, I know, I think one of them is red.
I can add that, um, so on one of the quotes, and I can pass these around, 116, which is paperweight, they do have on here jockey red, sun umbrella fabric. Uh, I don't know what that looks like, but that is on the quote.
That sounds like red and white stripe.
Doesn't?
Oh, or red solid.
I think it's a solid red, yeah, that's it, okay.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
Um, 108 Broadway, sun umbrella, black cherry fabric.
The 108, bluegrass.
Yes, ma'am.
It is what color? Black cherry?
Black cherry, sun umbrella, black cherry fabric.
Okay.
And.
100 South Main, that's the grill, right?
Yeah, solid black.
And that's black?
Yeah, and it was just, uh, it says recover canvas awning for grill area.
And the 107, 109, that is the old coffee shop in the Airbnb above it.
And what it says on here, recover canvas awnings color to be decided, so that may be one that.
Okay.
Need to communicate, and then also these as well, what, what those look like, but that's what's on the quote.
Yeah.
Y'all want to pass these around to you?
I, I don't, I'm, I'm good with it. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to accept that, um, conditionally until we get the final. Okay?
I second that motion. I definitely don't think.
First. I'll entertain the motion.
I'll entertain your, entertaining the motion and make a motion to accept those conditionally.
All in favor? Opposed? I think we're good.
I do want to make one statement. We don't want to have every single building with every single different color awning, right? I mean, are we looking at it in the whole as well?
Yeah, not every building has, um, an awning. And, um, there was, I don't, I can't remember what city it was, but they did every awning exactly the same, and it looked terrible. This is from my Main Street time, I trust you more than me, and it looked awful. So I, I think these, unless we, I mean, we don't want purple and pink stripe or bright green and yellow, but I think that I, I have no problem with the red and the rest of it's black and, and I trust you to.
I will have renderings before I actually approve them, so.
Okay.
Of the shape, size, color, but hopefully they can lay that on the front of their building and give me a little better idea of.
No fringe, please.
No fringe, okay.
And this is a, this is a little outside of, um... We have till December 15th to get this done, plus with the street, with the streetscape and torn up, it really had a crunch, so that's why, you know, I think that we can do it like this and it all be legal. Corey, are we all legal and good? Okay. So, thank you guys very much. Get this done and. Anybody else?
Number eight.
Oh, sorry, I was going home. General comments from this, from citizens, there's no one here? Um, board staff comments, I'll take a, um, a motion for adjournment?
Well, I will be stating one thing.
Okay, sorry.
I will be working on getting some training. I had some training for the Planning Commission, but, uh, Will Hager, our consulting planner, said that training would not apply to the ACS, so unfortunately, he said, I will give you some training, and that's been four or five weeks ago, so I'll touch base with him again, but it is looming there that, yes, we do need training, and I'd probably like to see us meet more than just once.
Well, we need to set a meeting for October. Well, we need to set a meeting for October. That we definitely know. I'm going to be gone till the fifteenth, if you guys want to meet before then. And, or if you want to meet after, I'll be available after, but.
Well, I think we have to legally meet once a quarter, don't we?
That, I think that was taken out of the bylaws.
Was it?
I think so. It was in the first set of bylaws and the ones.
Oh, that's right.
Bylaws twenty one.
As needed now.
Well, we weren't getting any.
I thought the month was taken out and the quarterly was put in. But we were meeting monthly, and I thought we changed it from monthly to quarterly.
I'll, I'll double check, actually what I will do, I will send the current bylaws to you by email. But if I'm not mistaken, it, it says ask me, but I will double check.
I, I think you're right, I think it does say as needed. What I would like to see happen, because I think as soon as we get the streetscape done, I think our jobs are going to become a lot more important. And I know that a lot of times, and Philip and I have had this discussion, things happen, and the HCC is kind of not even thought about. So I think if, plus, we're a brand new committee. Well, we've been around for a while, we haven't met that much. We do need training, I think, in what we're supposed to do and what our job is. I think that would be something really good to, for us to be trained in. And so maybe I would propose that we meet, well, we know we need to meet in October to approve these.
We have one other item that came in today regarding the little church. I'd already sent the packets out, so I know I will have one item. And I responded back and told them it would probably be late October.
And we, we might need to look at that, because I think what he's, I haven't seen what he's doing. But he's talking about Heylong Chapel. It's part of the DIG grant, and it was replacing some of the siding.
Some of the decayed siding, correct.
So it's just restoring it, it's not changing anything or doing anything. I'm not sure that we need to approve that. Corey?
We were talking about that a little bit beforehand. I don't think that you need to approve that either, it doesn't seem like you're making a change. But I think Chris would like some, some guidance from y'all, whether or not it's something you wanted to hear.
Personally, I think that just, I mean, that would be like somebody, maintenance, basically.
Idiots, it's.
Same thought, same material, same thing.
Yeah, and he's not changing anything on it. So I would, just my personal opinion, and I'd like to hear from you guys. I would like to tell him to go ahead and do it. And if it's, if there's no changes being made to the.
What's for me?
I'm good with that.
Jackie?
Do we have to have a public meeting now?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, okay.
I will go through step by step on what the repairs will entail and make sure that the facade will not be altered. And it is just strictly recovery and replacement.
It's probably siding back as well, not even.
The back needs a lot of help.
That's why I let my weeds grow up so high, so I don't see it.
Going back to the meetings, according to the latest, you know, I have here, in Article A, Section one, our meeting shall be held on an as needed basis. So if you've got something different than that.
That's what he said he had.
For sure, that's what.
This is bylaws that I have.
That's what I recall as well.
Yeah.
Would you guys like me to reach out to Amanda Smith and see if she would like to, I don't know if that's training, but figure for the next meeting or hold off?
Maybe reach out.
If we got to have it in August, December, we don't really have a lot of time to hold off too.
Well, I think we're going to schedule one for October, because we need to follow up, right?
Right, we need to, the final approval of that.
Final approval.
Yeah, if, if she's available.
The date.
Come in and do a, an hour training, is everyone up for an hour training?
I guess it's availability too.
Yeah, see what she can, maybe just talk to us about what, what the job of the HCC is. Because I know Chris and I are both, neither one of us really have had any experience with it. Am I right?
That's correct. Well, my past job, I did not have to attend the HCC. They actually met monthly, but staff was not involved in that particular meeting. So I am.
We're in this hat.
No, I think it'd be good for all of us, including Philip, will make you study too, and Corey.
And I'll double check with Will again, because that's actually what the planning commission, they, their, the planning commission and Philip's on the field. We got to find training.
Well, and they have a different job to do. And their job is different than ours, so, yeah.
So I think Philip and I get at least two hours of education for today.
Yeah. Really? I think I'm getting education every day.
I'm sure you are.
I am.
On the job train.
On the job.
Is there an additional discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Then I would make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.